Welcome, everyone, to the Tuesday, June 17th, 2025 Tom Water City Council Meeting. We will go ahead and start with rule call.
Councilmember Liata Dahoff?
Present.
Councilmember Angela Jefferson?
Present.
Councilmember Joan Cathy?
Present.
Councilmember Eileen Swarthout?
Present.
Councilmember Michael Altuser?
Present.
Councilmember Peter Agabi?
Present.
Councilmember Kelly Von Holtz?
Present.
Mayor Debbie Sullivan?
And I'm present. Join me in our salute to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. This evening, we have a couple of special items. The first one is proclamation for Juneteenth, and Councilmember Jefferson will read that proclamation.
Proclamation: Whereas our country is made up of people from every nation on earth, who are declared equal, not only in freedom but also in justice, both of which are essential for a healthy human civilization. And whereas, on January 1st, 1863, using his powers as president, Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, providing that all persons held as slaves shall be then, thenceforward, and forever free. The Emancipation Proclamation made the permanent abolition of slavery and provided the legal framework for the emancipation of nearly four million slaves in states that had seceded from the United States. And whereas, on June 19th, 1865, nearly nine decades after our nation's founding and more than two years after President Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, enslaved African Americans in Galveston, Texas finally received word that they were free. And whereas, celebration of Juneteenth began June 19th, 1866, with parades, cookouts, prayer gatherings, musical performances, and historical cultural readings. As freed families immigrated away from Texas, they carried the Juneteenth celebration with them, commemorating Juneteenth with celebrations across the country. And whereas, Juneteenth is a day of profound significance, slavery has left a catastrophic and unrelenting legacy of trauma for generations of African Americans, also known as Freedom Day, Jubilee Day, Liberation Day, and Emancipation Day. Juneteenth is a holiday that celebrates the emancipation of slavery and a day that reminds us of our incredible capacity to heal, hope, and emerge from our darkest moments with purpose, resolve, and unity. Now, therefore, Debbie Sullivan, Mayor of the City of Tom Water, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2025, Juneteenth. And she calls on the people of Tom Water to join together on Juneteenth, to reflect on the past, to commit together to continue to eradicate systemic racism, to look to the future, and to work each day to lift each other up for collective prosperity and liberty. Signed in the City of Tom Water, Washington, and recognized on this 17th date, June, in the year 2025. Signed, Debbie Sullivan, Mayor.
Thank you. We were going to have Lester Dixon from the Fred U. Harris Lodge accept this proclamation, but we do have Dr. Thelma Jackson, and I believe she can go ahead and give this to the Lodge. So if you don't mind, do you want to say a few words on the Juneteenth? Because I know you celebrate and have been very active in that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I was not expecting to stand in for Lester and Fred U. Harris Lodge this evening, but the occasion is significant enough that I'm honored you're inviting me to do this. Juneteenth, this being the second year that it's a national holiday, is so significant, given the things that are going on in our nation right now. As we talk about freedom and justice and liberty and those ideals that's been around for so long, all of them are under dire straits right now. And Juneteenth takes on a lot more significance this year than even last year, the first year, and certainly years before that. For those individuals in Texas who found themselves enslaved an additional two and a half years after the Emancipation Proclamation, and not to mention those enslaved people who were not in states that succeeded from the Union. People think the Emancipation Proclamation freed all the slaves, but only slaves in those states that had succeeded from the Union. And so it's a time of history. It's a time of refamiliarizing ourselves with how this holiday came about and why it is so significant for such a time as this. So thank you, Mayor.
Oh. Thank you so much for doing your work. All right. We have another item on our special items. And at the previous meeting, Councilmember Von Holtz brought forward an important item. At the December 3rd, 2024 council meeting, we adopted Resolution R. 2024-015, affirming our commitment to equity, dignity, and protection of the civil rights and stand against hate and bigotry and discrimination. So the resolution was originated by the Council, the Public Health and Safety Committee, and the Council adopted it in support of people in this community and around the nation. Larry Jefferson, who is Chair of the NAACP, spoke at public comment, and all of the council members spoke at that time, and was a unanimous and strong support for this milestone in our community and the Foundation for a Safe and Welcoming Community. While we refer to the language in the resolution in last December's council meeting, because it was a resolution and not a proclamation, we did not read it in its entirety during that meeting, which is usual practice between proclamations and resolutions. So at this time, we're going to have Councilmember Von Holtz go ahead and read the resolution that was adopted in December. So I will go ahead and turn it over to Councilmember Von Holtz.
Thank you, Mayor. As the mayor mentioned, back in December, we had passed this resolution, and it was unanimous, but because it was part of the consent agenda, it wasn't read aloud. So the community didn't have an opportunity to hear its words spoken out loud. The resolution came as a direct response to some deeply troubling incidents shared with us by community members of color. These were experiences of hate, discrimination, and intolerance. It was also influenced by the voices of the Thurston County NAACP and the invaluable work done by Councilmembers Jefferson and the Public Health and Safety Committee, who listened to and advocated for the voices of our community. At this moment in history, when our country and communities are experiencing so much division, it is crucial that we stand together openly and clearly to condemn hate and bigotry in all of its forms. This resolution was born out of hard work, great intent, and deep reflection on our values as a community. However, the way it was passed within the consent calendar did not allow for the resolution's true significance to be heard. The community should have been given the opportunity to hear the words of the resolution out loud, to reflect on its meaning, and to understand the weight of our commitment. As elected leaders in this community, it is essential that we not only talk the talk but walk the walk. It is important that we demonstrate through our actions that we stand firmly against hate, bigotry, and discrimination in all forms. We, as the Council, want to publicly demonstrate that we are committed to fighting hate and bigotry in Tom Water. I am particularly honored to have Dr. Thelma Jackson from the Thurston County NAACP here with us tonight. Her presence in the work of the NAACP underscored the importance of this commitment and the hard work they continue to do for racial equity and justice in our community. We are grateful for their leadership and partnership in making Tom Water a safer, more inclusive place for everyone. And now I'll read the resolution. Resolution Number R. 2024-015. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Tom Water, Washington, affirming the Council's commitment to equality, dignity, and the protection of civil rights and the standing against hate, bigotry, and discrimination. Whereas, the City of Tom Water is a community that values diversity, inclusivity, and the respect for all individuals, regardless of race, creed, color, national origin, citizenship, or immigration status, families with children, sex, marital status, sex orientation, age, honorably discharged veteran or military status, or the presence of any sensory, mental, or physical disability. And whereas, the City of Tom Water recognizes the importance of fostering an environment where all residents feel safe, welcome, and valued, and that discrimination, hate, and acts of violence undermine these values. And whereas, the civil rights are fundamental to the foundation of our democratic society, ensuring that all individuals have the right to equal protection under the law, the right to freedom of speech, and the right to participate fully in public life without fear of discrimination or retaliation. And whereas, the City of Tom Water condemns all forms of hate, including but not limited to hate crimes, discrimination, harassment, and acts of bigotry that target individuals based on their race, creed, color, national origin, citizenship, or immigration status, families with children, sex, marital status, sexual orientation, age, honorably discharged veteran or military status, or the presence of any sensory, mental, or physical disability. And whereas, recent events at the national, state, and local levels have highlighted the need for communities to take a firm stand against hate and the violation of civil rights, and to reaffirm our shared commitment to justice, equality, and human dignity. And whereas, the City of Tom Water is committed to promoting equity and justice with our own institutions, policies, and practices, as well as ensuring that city services and programs are accessible to all residents without discrimination. And whereas, the City of Tom Water seeks to empower all members of the community to report hate crimes, discrimination, and civil rights violations, and to work collaboratively with law enforcement, community organizations, and other stakeholders to address these issues. And whereas, the City of Tom Water urges all residents, businesses, and organizations to stand together in rejecting hate, promoting kindness and understanding, and working towards a community where every individual is treated with dignity and respect. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Tom Water as follows. Section 1, City Council Commitment to Equality, Dignity, and the Protection of Civil Rights and Standing Against Hate, Bigotry, and Discrimination. The City of Tom Water unequivocally denounces hate, bigotry, discrimination, and any violations of civil rights within our community. The City of Tom Water reaffirms its commitment to protecting the civil rights of all individuals. The City of Tom Water will continue to work proactively to foster a culture of inclusivity, diversity, belonging, and mutual respect, engaging with residents, community leaders, and organizations to address discrimination and promote understanding. The City of Tom Water supports local law enforcement in their efforts to investigate and address hate crimes and violations of civil rights and encourages residents to report any incidents of hate or discrimination they experience or witness. The City of Tom Water commits to ongoing education and outreach efforts to raise awareness about civil rights, diversity, and the harmful impacts of hate, bigotry, and discrimination on individuals and the community as a whole. The City of Tom Water will review and, where necessary, revise its policies, procedures, and practices to ensure they promote equity, inclusion, belonging, and the protection of civil rights for all residents. The City of Tom Water urges all residents, businesses, and organizations to stand together in rejecting hate, promoting kindness and understanding, and working towards a community where every individual is treated with dignity and respect. Section 2, City Council Commitment to Action. The City of Tom Water and its council commit to continuing to continue working with those in the community affected by racism and other forms of discrimination. The City has begun exploratory work on the creation of an Equity Commission and has added resources and contact information to its website for community members who may experience hate crimes or have concerns about hate crimes. The City is working with the community of Tom Water as well as surrounding communities in seeking perspectives gained from the lived experience of community members, building ideas with them in the Tom Water spirit of neighborliness and respect, and standing with those in the community, working to increase safety and sense of belonging for the people of Tom Water. Any act consistent with authority and prior to the effective date of this resolution is hereby ratified and affirmed. The provisions of this resolutions are declared separate and severable and the invalidity of any clause, sentence, paragraph, subdivision. Okay, I'm going to skip all of that. Anyhow, it was resolved on the third day of December of 2024 by Mayor Debbie Sullivan, and that's the resolution.
Thank you. Yeah, resolutions are usually much longer than proclamations, so yeah. So I appreciate that, and thank you, Dr. Jackson, for bringing that forward and making this more public awareness. Is there anything that you wanted to add to that?
Thank you for the notification that this item was on your agenda this evening, and I appreciate it knowing that. On behalf of the NAACP, when we visited with you in December, when your resolution was presented, we were somewhat baffled because the NAACP had sent letters to the three major cities and the county requesting such a proclamation or declaration, if you will. And knowing that all the meetings are public and they are read and entered into the public record, all the meetings are televised for the public to know what kinds of actions you were taking, we followed up with the question of, may we have a copy of that resolution since it was not read during the meeting? And your citizens do not know what was in that resolution, and it's such a powerful resolution. It has such a deep meaning. It goes into layers, much more so than the proclamations did from the other jurisdictions. And here we are, six months later, and we're living in the climate that we are. And we've seen a huge effort to turn back diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging, and anything in any shape, form, or fashion. And Washington State is a target because it's been a DEIB state. And so the citizens just need to know that you, as their leaders, you know, have made this commitment, and it goes very deep. It lays out your actions. And I know that having met with you, Mayor, and several of your staff, that part of your plan of work for 2025 is the development of an Equity Commission and the kinds of things you speak about in your actions. So on behalf of the NAACP, I applaud your follow-up action because people are wondering whether leaders stand on these important issues. And so now it's in your public record, other than just a resolution by number. And I'm pleased to report that back to my body, that you all took care of that little piece of business. So thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Holtz, for your leadership on that. Councilmember Dahoff, Angela, who worked very hard in the development of that. And so now all three of our cities and the county are on record with this passage of this proclamation, three proclamations and a resolution, talking about hate and meanness and all those things that we're trying to eradicate in our community. So thank you again.
Yes. And just for the public, too, you know, so we don't have, you know, just for clarification, resolutions aren't typically read, but they can be read. So we just need to know ahead of time to have it, pull it off, and make that special thing. We can always have it read, but that's not typically what we do with resolutions. They're way more detailed, and they're set by policy by the council. So but it's not that we can't do it. We just need to do notifications because we sometimes have five or six, seven resolutions on ours consent calendar sometimes. But this one is very important, so.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. All right. With that, we're now going to move to public comment. And at this time, we will receive public comment. You may comment on items relating to city business not scheduled for a public hearing, which we do not have this evening. There was a sign-up sheet at the back, and so I will go ahead and get that, have the list here. Each individual is limited to one three-minute period, and we do have a clock there that will keep your time. And speakers may not comment or promote, advocate, or oppose, or speak on pending initiatives, ballot measures, or candidates. All comments shall be directed towards the council as a whole and not to individual council members and not to members of the audience. And so we're just asking to refrain from disruptive behavior. And so I will go ahead and call. The first person is Corinne? Corritney? Courtney? Okay. If you can come to the podium and then state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes on the clock.
I'm Courtney Holt House. My current address right now is 6605 Lyron Court, Southwest. I'm litigating against Tom Water businesses. I'm Courtney Murray Holt House, federal plaintiff, taking on Providence St. Peters Hospital Multi-Care Lacey Emergency, the Department of Corrections, my former employer, and Tom Water Police Department. On February 25th of this year, I stood outside Tom Water City Hall, my car covered in simple protest messages against my former employer, Department of Corrections. Seconds later, cops started following me. They deny it. And guess what? No one cares. But I have the evidence. My devices around the same time were hacked and sabotaged, and it's happening still, it seems. I also have the evidence. I went to the hospital in March for help and was given a bipolar one with paranoia diagnosis when I explained my situation. No evaluation. It was simply passed between Providence St. Peters Hospital and multi-care emergency rooms, like my consent and rights didn't matter. Providence St. Peters Hospital has been funded by Washington State Patrol, IBM, KPMG, and the Olympian. This isn't healthcare. It's a corrupt system hiding behind white coats. I saw the writing on the wall. No, literally. The names were on donor plaques at Providence St. Peters Hospital. Before my unemployment hearing on March 17th, Assistant Attorney General Peter Kay of the Attorney General's Office mocked my mental health challenges in writing and said that my legal complaint would be confusing due to my mental health challenges. That's not just bullying. That's discrimination. I'm a sexual assault survivor. I applied for crime victim assistance. The answer? No crime. As if hacking, medical fraud, medical malpractice, and blatant discrimination, none of it counts since I'm the victim. When will I get a crime victim's assistance? I'm still waiting for the audio and video of February 25th that was claimed to be exempt because a random crime nearby at the same timeframe is not a good excuse. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person on the list is Ryan Reynolds.
My name's Ryan Reynolds. I'm current president, Tomar Chamber. I live at 9020 Blomberg Street, Southwest. And I came up, just as a reminder, that on Thursday, Juneteenth, you'd love to have one, two, three representatives, four, five, at our Chamber Golf Tournament, Fourth Annual Tournament. There is a table for as many members as would like to be there with Tomar School District. And the reason I wanted to come up and bring that up is just to talk again about the importance of the triad between the school district, the chamber, and the city. Those three put together the base and the foundation of our community and all communities, where you have the business, the public, the school, and the local governments together. And it'd be great if one, two, three, four, five, six, everybody would show up. All that we're asking is maybe for an hour when people show up there. There's no need to stay the whole time, but everybody's more than welcome to. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. What time does it start?
At eight o'clock.
In the morning. Great. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Dr. Thelma Jackson, you were on the list. Did you want to? Okay. Perfect. Anyone else in the chamber? Did we have anyone online? No one online. All right. Anyone else in chambers which to speak in public comment? All right. With that, I will move to the consent calendar. Do I have anyone wanting to make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved. I'll second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Dahoff, seconded by Councilmember Von Holtz. Any discussion? All right. With that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. All right. The motion carries. With the consent calendar, we have approved the minutes of the City Council June 3rd meeting, payment vouchers, interlocal agreement with the cities of Lacey, Olympia, Yelm on updated of the accessory dwelling unit plans, service provider agreement with Artisans Group for the update on accessory dwelling plant, unit plans, supplemental agreement number two to Terra Row for X Street Roundabout Project, agreement with Thurston County for specialized recreation, appointment of David Bills, Brian Reynolds, and Seth Paul for the Lodging and Tax Advisory Committee, and the Association of Washington City's 2025 Annual Budget Meeting Voting Delegates. So with that, those items were approved. Now we will go to council considerations, and we will start off with Troy Nemar on the quarterly financial update.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Troy Nemar, Finance Director for the City of Tom Water. And this is our quarterly financial update for the full council. So last time we had this for the full council, this took place on April 8th. We reviewed the results of the 2023-2024 biennium, and also looked at some Tom Water data for January through March. Today, we're going to take a look at the broader economy to start with, some risks that we're starting to see, also some upsides, and then more of specific Tom Water data. So if we go back, actually, even all of 2024, while staff and the council were working on developing the budget for '25-'26, things were looking pretty good. The economy was humming along. We were about, we were working on, or the Federal Reserve was working on achieving what they called the soft landing. For anyone that doesn't know, you'll recall, we had really high inflation in 2022 and 2023. Inflation got really high. The Federal Reserve responded by raising interest rates to try to cool the economy and bring inflation down. But that's a tricky balance to try to do because you don't want to raise rates too high and throw the economy into recession. And so that became known as if they could, if they could pull that off by not causing a recession and bringing inflation down, they called that the soft landing. So towards the end of the year, we were achieving that soft landing. Recession was avoided. Inflation was down. Unemployment continued to be low. The Federal Reserve was cutting interest rates again because the economy was doing so well and inflation was coming down enough. It was projected to have continued economic growth, and Wall Street and investors and everybody were really excited about the incoming administration. And then April 2nd happened. Tariffs were announced. They're very broad and wide-reaching. The stock market declined very sharply, and that whole situation just introduced a massive uncertainty into all of the financial markets and the economy, and there was no clear economic plan. clear economic plan. So what do we mean by no clear economic plan? NPR summed it up pretty nicely when they said Trump's tariffs are so far-reaching, and they include several remote uninhabited islands. So that was a pretty good summary of not a very well-baked plan and not a very well-informed plan. April and May of 2025, everything kept changing. Tariffs are on, the tariffs are off, they're changing to this and that. The markets, consumers, and the economy in general do not like uncertainty. They don't respond well. It's not good for any of them. Tariffs and deportations are highly inflationary policies. Just to be clear, that is not a political statement. Try to be very non-political. That's just an economic fact. Higher inflation leads to higher interest rates, just like we saw in 2022 and 2023. And then high interest rates discourage large purchases like homes and automobiles.
Wait one second, Councilmember Jefferson, did you have a question?
So what does that mean for us?
I think you'll get there.
We will get to that.
Okay.
But do feel free to ask questions as we go, but for that part, we will definitely get to that. Okay, so mid to late April in 2025, these are some excerpts from USA Today. The first one, experts predicting slowed economic growth, the economy kind of stalling out, lowering expectations for growth. In, on the middle one there, survey of 46 economists raising the chance of recession from 25% in February up to nearly 50% in April. That's gone over 50% since that time. And then the bottom one, quote from an economist, "We had a very solid economy at the beginning of the year. The tariffs are weakening activity and weakening demand." So why is it important to have clear policies? Excuse me. Investors like certainty. If someone's thinking of opening a new business, they want to know what the environment's going to look like in six months or a year. If they're thinking about expanding any kind of investment you're doing, really, you want to, while nobody can predict the economy, you want to have some certainty, some expectations of what's going to happen. And so when it's just chaos, it's very difficult for businesses and investors to make decisions. And that's where we remain today in this period of uncertainty. The tariffs haven't been getting as much media lately, but those aren't done. That was a, the President put a 90-day pause on tariffs with China, so there's still more work to do there. A lot of economists believe that a supply chain shortage is imminent because traffic has slowed down at ports. There's been less goods coming into the country, and that's going to catch up with us at some point unless things change drastically. Nobody knows how long this will last or where the tariffs will end up. Retailers, are they going to raise prices? If so, by how much? And then we've also seen some companies, because they don't want to inflame the President, they're now using different words for tariffs like sourcing costs and input costs or supply chain costs. But those are just tariffs with a different name. And then as during the pandemic, corporate greed sneaks in there once in a while, too, and you might get companies raising prices just because consumers are expecting increased prices. We're seeing some significant risks with what's called the big bill. As the bill stood, at least when it was submitted from the House to the Senate, massive cuts to Medicaid, which are obviously going to hurt the people who can least afford it, the national debt projected to go up $3.3 trillion, that is a problem, and that will have to be paid for at some point if it goes through. Moody's Investment Services downgraded the U.S. credit rating. That's the first time in the history of our country that that's been done. And that is, that is not taken lightly. They know they're going to get a lot of blowback for downgrading the U.S. credit rating, and they take it very seriously. Because of all that, foreign investors are starting to find U.S. debt less attractive and more risky, which means rates are going to have to go up to attract investors. The United States is going to have to pay more on the interest rates and the debt service, and it's got a big downhill effect. As bond rates go up and treasury rates go up, that comes down to higher borrowing costs for everybody, for the federal government, state government, and local government, and even our personal finances. And some cracks are starting to show. Consumer confidence is way down right now, and we'll show you some graphs of that here in just a minute. In the first quarter of 2025, nationally, the GDP shrank, had a negative GDP number the first time in three years. If the second quarter is also a negative GDP number, then by definition, that's a recession. So we'll be keeping a close eye, looking for that number. Our April sales tax here in Tumwater also was the lowest single-month collection in the last three years. We're going to dive into that some more. Unemployment is starting to tick up just a little bit. It's still holding fairly steady, and it's still pretty historically low, but it's kind of getting to a tipping point. And then there's talk from economists of what they call stagflation, which is high inflation and a shrinking economy. That's pretty rare. It doesn't happen very often. Typically, if the economy is booming, inflation might be higher. If the economy is bad, inflation is really low or even deflation. So stagflation is the worst of both worlds. So hopefully, something can be done to avoid that. So this is a graph of consumer sentiment or consumer confidence. This is tracked by the University of Michigan. They've been doing this since 1960, and they report out about quarterly on this. And so this graph goes back from between 2015 and 2025. You'll see from 2015 to 2020, consumer confidence was really high, and then it dropped very sharply. That was the COVID pandemic. It's bounced around a little since then. It got pretty low in 2022, but came back up, and now in 2025, it's very low again. And it dropped significantly when those tariffs were announced. This is the same data point, but it goes all the way back to 1960, to current. The gray shaded lines that you see vertically there, those are recessions. And the wider the line, the longer the recession. And so you can see along some of those where there's really sharp dips. Oftentimes, a recession follows or happens concurrently, but not always. The most recent dip in 2022, there was no recession associated with that. And here we are in 2025, that number, or that consumer confidence level again has dropped to pretty much an all-time low. And so that just gives us some insight into what consumers are thinking and feeling about the economy and about their future prospects. This graph is a different data point. The black dotted line is how consumers feel about the potential of losing a job in the next five years. And the red solid line is how consumers feel about losing a job in the next year. The thing that really stood out to me on this, you know, you can look back like the other ones and see where recessions were, but if you look all the way to the right in 2025, both of those lines are on the same trajectory, and they're both very high. So again, consumers not feeling confident about their future prospects in the next year or over the next five years. Okay, let me pull us out of the dark for a minute and talk about something a little more positive. I think in Tumwater here, we have an advantage over a lot of cities. We are, even though our sales tax is now our single largest revenue source for the general fund, we are less dependent on sales tax than some cities. Some cities are 30%, 40%, 50% reliant on sales tax, and that's not us, so that helps. We have very steady employment here in Tumwater with being near the state Capitol, all the state buildings here in Tumwater, a lot of really steady jobs. And even when the economy tracks, contracts, and unemployment goes up in our area, it's not, we're not like a Renton where we have Boeing that lays off 20,000 workers. The state might shrink their workforce a little bit, but it's not that drastic, which is a great thing for us. And then continued growth. We are, Tumwater is expected to continue growing for the next 20 or so years, as we've been talking about in the comprehensive plan. So that's an advantage to us as well. Okay, now we're going to get into some of our Tumwater data. That highlighted cell there, so you've got the years going across. That highlight is April 2025, and again, the lowest sales tax single-month collection in three years. If you look farther to the right at the percentage change, you'll see January had a small decrease in sales tax collections, and this is month-over-month, comparing 24 to 25. February and March looked really good, and then April came in not so great.
Councilmember Jefferson?
Yes, Troy. So is that because consumers are pulling back and they're just not spending as much at Costco and Walmart and Home Depot?
Probably. Can't say 100% for sure, but that's, given all the other data, the things going on in the economy, the consumer confidence, that very well could be.
Thank you.
Okay, and then this is similar data. So this is just on that bottom row. That's a summary of the first quarter of our Tumwater sales tax data. Even despite that, well, that, sorry, the first quarter does not include April. So that was January, February, March. We were up 2.77% year-to-date. And then that, the line above that, that total, that's year-to-date including April. So it dropped us down about a tenth of a percent or so. But still, but we're still looking pretty good. So now we're looking forward to May and hoping for a better number. And we did get a better number. It's a little hard to see there. I didn't highlight it, but in that 2025 column for May, it's 782,000, almost $100,000 better than April was, so that was good. But if we look at May of 2024, we're down $63,000. So that was, that was a seven-and-a-half percent decrease. And then total year-to-date sales tax collections now are down almost 4.9%. So this is something we'll continue to keep a really close eye on, and we do have some positives coming up, too. So now, so before, we were comparing sales tax month-over-month from 2024 to 2025. This is a comparison of our budget to actual. So we have a budget goal for sales tax collections and compare that to actual. So if you look at the year-to-date percent farther on the right, we're through May, we're 41.6% through the year, and our sales tax collections are at 35.86. So we're, so from that, the budget-to-actual perspective, we're down about 5.8% on sales tax. This is the public safety sales tax. It's still sales tax. We just track it separately, as you know. And there's, because this was a new revenue stream that started last April, we don't have good month-over-month comparisons yet, but starting in June, we should have better comparisons on a month-to-month basis for that.
Councilmember Dolhov has a question?
Thank you, Mayor. Just clarification, public safety sales, that's a prop one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so now a bright shining star in our revenue collections, BNO tax. BNO tax, as you can see here, this is the month-over-month basis. It started off in January with a 6% increase, 5.7%, 10%, 5.5%. Did have a bad May, down nearly 20%, but year-to-date, we're up 7.5% on the BNO tax. And so, so that's a different data point that brings us a little bit of good news in our revenue collections. General fund revenues overall, so this slide and the next slide hit kind of all the major categories of our general fund revenue from the budget-to-actual perspective. Property taxes is a little ahead. That doesn't, that's great, and that, but that's more of a timing issue. We are a few percent ahead there, but that's because we get the bulk of the property tax in April slash May and then October, November. So that looks great now, but over the next few months, it's going to look bad on paper until we get that final big chunk of it. But it should be pretty right on. We talked about sales tax, BNO on the budget-to-actual side, we're at 50% collected for BNO tax for our budget, so that's way ahead of schedule. Utility tax is looking good. Building permits are off the charts at 91% collected, and we're not even halfway through the year.
Councilmember Althausser has a question. His hand up for a question.
Okay.
Councilmember Althausser?
Thanks. Property taxes are just inherently less cyclical than sales tax, right? Because the value of properties steadily increases. It's capped at 1%, so it's like a steady growth rate typically. TMPD is all property tax, and property tax is also obviously all property tax. I don't quite, is it just timing that you're saying that allows TMPD to be at about 75% on the yearly total, whereas property tax is only at 45% of the timing of the tranches we get in from the state? Is that the only difference in the gap between those? Because they're both based on property tax, right?
They are. I was going to say, I'll look into that further for you because they should be tracking about the same. It's possible, thinking back now to the budget, we did, we had the first five years of the TMPD at the lower rate, and last fall was when we had promised, you know, when it was passed that we would increase that up to a higher rate. We may not have just budgeted the revenue side consistently with that, but underestimated it.
Well, that would be nice, right? That makes the budget issue easier, right?
Yep, it all helps. And yes, you're correct. Property tax is not, we don't see big swings up and down in property tax. It's pretty, pretty steady and reliable.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Some of these other revenue streams of the grants are cyclical and just in terms of timing and things like that, so not too worried about those. We talked about the public safety. The miscellaneous line is a pretty big one. That's kind of all the state shared revenues, so your marijuana tax, liquor tax, things like that, motor vehicle excise tax. Those are running a little bit behind. But we'll see if those, some of those are also kind of remitted quarterly and some are monthly, so we'll see how that kind of works out. And then, so my main point that I wanted to get across to you on this slide, if you look at that percent year-to-date down at the bottom in bold, we've collected 40, almost 44% of our general fund revenue, and we're 41% through the year. So that's, so overall, even though not everything's perfect, sales tax is struggling a little bit, overall, our revenue collection is doing well, and we're on track. On the expenditure side of things, this is year-to-date totals for general fund expenditures. Got several departments up there. The general government column is kind of all the support departments, like finance and legal and HR and others. And so at that, at the bottom on the totals, percent year-to-date, 36.71% spent year-to-date, but we're 41.6% through the year. So we're about 5% low on the expenditure side, which just gives us a little bit of a cushion should the revenue fall a little bit short. So that's, so that's good news for us. We've got the utilities. These look a little weird because we've got big capital projects budgeted for this biennium, so, you know, millions and millions of dollars of money for operations and maintenance center and big water storage tank that haven't started yet. So those revenues and expenses look really small. Sewer's doing good. Same with storm, looks really small because of capital. And then for golf, that looks really low on the revenue side, and that's partially because they use a completely different computer system than we use at City Hall. And it takes them time to close their month, get that data to finance, get it into our ERP system. And so this is actually, I should have adjusted the far-right number. This is actually not through May. This is only through April for them. And May should be a really good month with the nice weather we've had, and they're coming into their busy time, so they've got a good chance to catch up. And that's what I have for you for now. I'm happy to take more questions.
Any questions? Right, Councilmember Dolhov?
Thank you. I'm just agreeing with Councilmember. Thank you. I'm just agreeing with Councilmember Jefferson. I appreciate this update, and I appreciate the feedback and how you're always adjusting. So I think it's really informative, and it helps us when we get questions from constituents to offer some reassurance. So thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Swarlat?
One of the things I wrote down, just as a note to myself, is that we don't go into debt unless it's absolutely necessary. And I think we have, it shows like, for our constituents to understand that, like, the, how much is in our stormwater and how much is in our different, because we collect, so we can pay for those upfront rather than having to take on debt to do these kinds of projects.
We, we are planning on issuing debt for the really big projects, so.
We know that for the operations building, but typically on some of these other things that we, we save for.
Yeah, there's, over the years, there's lots of things that we've just saved for and paid cash. Yeah, we haven't used very much debt financing over the last 30 years.
Yeah, I think that's remarkable, and it should be like noted that, that's our, tumwater's had that pattern, and you continue that for us. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Great. Any other question? All right. Yeah, it's always very, you know, when one thing is happening one month and one quarter, and everything comes in at a different time, it's really hard to give like this really standardized where we're all at in all of that. So I do appreciate that. I think this is very detailed. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll go to our next council consideration, our 10-year financial planning update.
You get me again. That's really convenient that I don't have to sit down and come back up. So again, Troy Nehmeyer, Finance Director, and I'm just here for this portion of, of the evening to introduce Morgan Shook. I think you've actually met him at a, maybe at a work session before. Morgan is with Eco Northwest, and this is the firm that we've hired to help us with our 10-year financial plan. And so he's gonna kind of walk us through their progress to date. Thank you, Morgan.
Thank you, Troy, and good evening, councilmembers and mayor. Just a quick introduction. Morgan Shook, I'm a director and partner at Eco Northwest. We're an economics finance firm. I have a deep specialization working with local governments on a range of financial planning projects. And so whether that is sort of more near term around evaluating levy lid lifts or other kind of unique funding devices like transportation benefit districts, or doing kind of long range financial planning, it's a great joy because it all becomes really real, as you guys know, when you have to make sit down every August and fall and go through the budget. And so when your city administrator, Lisa Parks, reached out to us and said, and asking for some support for the city to contemplate its 10-year financial strategy, I understood that as a time here where of some flux, right? The city made some big investments in terms of personnel and bringing sort of pay back into equity, as well as sort of trying to equalize some personnel and staffing matters. And it was then a good time to kind of pause and say, okay, great. So we had some financial capacity as a city to make these changes, and then to then contemplate sort of what does the world look like going forward. And that context is really in the understanding that there are a range of sort of existing opportunities and challenges with respect to delivering levels of service that the community members sort of desire, as well as some potential big projects on, on, on the horizon. Obviously, there was a vote last fall on a regional fire authority, and those are some still unresolved issues with respect to sort of public safety and what that might look like in the next five to 10 years. And so our work here then is really in support of that, and particularly in relation to other projects you have. You have your strategic planning process that you were engaged with at the council level. You had a community survey to kind of weigh sort of the quality and desires of the community for services. And so this piece of work is really complimentary to those, to help elucidate insights around your sort of current opportunities and challenges as a city, and, and then also to the, then contemplate sort of potential changes moving forward, either in terms of sort of delivering more or different kinds of services, as well as potentially matching that to a revenue strategy that provides sustainability and makes your job easier to balance the budget every other year as opposed to harder. And so what have we done? Our basic approach here is to build you analytic tools that you can ask a bunch of what-if questions. And the heart of this is actually building a long range financial forecasting tool, not forecasting tool, projection tool, that mimics the actual structure of the city in terms of how it hires people, what it's paying, what are the nonlabor costs, the things you have to buy, what are the big capital projects, when do you actually want to sort of put those in place, how are you funding those things? And so our work to date has really been creating those, that tool. And as, and that tool is something that will live with the city, easily updated, based on just exporting a lot of information that you do in your budget cycle, so you can kind of then get a good look of what you think the future may look like. And so for this purpose, though, we're then using that as a scenario tool to basically understand the city and answer a bunch of what-if questions. And so I'm not going to belabor a lot of this. This is really just show and tell about what the model looks like. But for your purposes, the way we build it is from the ground up. We basically say, well, what are the, the departments, right, have people in them? Those people are paid salaries. You have a bunch of other nonlabor costs for buying supplies and materials and that, of that nature. We want to make sure we, we understand what that looks like, so we can vary that going forward. If you want to hire, like at the bottom there, if you wanted to hire new positions in 2027, we can then model what that looks like and what the impact would be on the city's overall financial sustainability. As you guys know, you don't necessarily always look at the budget at a sort of that level of detail to, but those expenditures and departments then roll up into funds. And those funds have different roles and responsibilities. Your enterprise funds like development services versus your general fund that you are managing most of your current expenses as a city.
Councilmember Dahlhoff has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. I'm just trying to think of all the opportunities you're presenting to us. Say if we're recruiting for a position and we are unable to attract talent because of a disparity in pay, could we plug in and then see what could happen and what we could offer?
Certainly.
Thank you so much.
Yes, yeah, we can, we can vary pay as well for those positions. The other piece here then is we also tie this to your revenue world. And I think as Troy elucidated, that's very complicated. You have different tax bases. Those tax bases are very dynamic and respond to what's happening, both in the macro environment as well as sort of local policies. And so we're able then to actually model that, those, those changes. And so we can see, well, what happens if the property tax is growing stronger? What if we see a decrease in sales taxes? What happens in our, you know, business and operations taxes if the economy is burning hotter or cooler? We can vary those pieces and then say, well, what is the overall impact on our general fund, right, as we sum all these things up? Is our situation, if we make certain choices on the cost side, is our budget situation more difficult to balance it? What revenue tools will be necessary? We can ask the what-if, right? What if the economy is burning a little hotter? Like, are we in a better situation versus if the economy is burned, you know, in recession? What are the downside risks that we may have? We then can also model policy changes on the revenue side. So what if you decided to say, well, what if we went with a levy lid lift to pay for the following set of services? What would that look like in terms of revenue? And, and what that would mean? What if we then changed like utility tax rates to raise revenue for certain purposes? How would we then, how would then, how would things then perform? So this is all just a little background about the tool. So we have, it's very flexible, and we can look at lots of different iterations on the cost and revenues, revenue side. So that brings us then current to what I think we're trying to do here is engage you in understandings and insights around your current budget, and then using that as a launchpad to be thinking about choices and prioritization. And so right now, we're engaged in a process, right, of, of our base year is starting with our 25, 26 biennial budget. We've taken some, some cues and information on your council strategic planning process, and we're going to engage a little more there as well. But we've been currently engaged with your senior departmental leadership to basically slice and dice the budget in ways that I think might be helpful in understanding what your choices are, particularly with respect to sort of prioritization and making choices on the cost and revenue side. So the, what we're asking departments to do is really reorganize their spending into three different kinds of buckets. And the reason we use this sort of three tiered framework is because it helps us understand what the enterprise is here and how much room you really have to make choices that it can affect that. So the first thing we ask to do is really kind of organize the budget into sort of core and required services. So a simple way to think about this is, you know, the city is a $50 million enterprise. If you're just turning on the lights, delivering those core services, what is that? Is that 40 million, 45, 35 million? But it gives us a good understanding of that floor, right? If it's just like, what are the basic set of services and what does it cost? We then ask departments then to organize themselves into what are the current community commitments? So what have past councils, this council have directed staff to do in terms of expanding the scale, scope, and quality of services? And when we do that, right, not only do we cover the personnel that are here, but we've also asked them to identify what they would need to meet those current commitments. And so if we were then to tally that up, like instead of the $50 million enterprise we have today, maybe it's a 51, 55, $60 million. I don't know yet. We're in that process. But it gives you some understanding and kind of potentially, you know, if we were to kind of do all those things, what would that be? And then we ask them also then to kind of also catalog things that this council, things in their professional judgment that should be added to help kind of enhance the level of service and, and services that are provided by the city. So with that sort of three pieces, right, what do we get? Right? We get some clarity, right, of understanding the city enterprise at a department basis, right? What is this department doing in their core sort of existing commitments and enhanced services? So you get the understanding, you can tier the cost of that in, with that framework. We get some transparency, right, around sort of what the effect of that is. And then the other part here that's really important as we kind of move forward and engage is that we can then understand some priorities and have some revenue awareness about what additional things may be necessary to achieve those goals. And so to make that a little clearer, I use a term here that I think is, is useful. When I said existing commitments could be 55 million relative to your current budget of 50 million, what we see in a lot of cities is what we call kind of a shadow deficit, right? Basically, this idea that there is a difference between community expectations or commitments and the resources that are currently available to meet them. The positive way of saying this, I think, from a lot of staff members in a lot of cities, is we're trying to do more with less. But in the reality, right, that is a very sort of difficult thing to execute. What you're really trying to do is reprioritizing kind of things, or you're sort of deferring them at a certain day when things can happen, because there's always something new. And so whether that's sort of unfunded mandates, you know, community desires for better or improved services without additional funding, infrastructure and maintenance activities that get deferred or delayed because of those constraints, we really want to sort of elucidate and shine a light on those things so that you can understand what kind of risks and gaps that are there between the expectation and the reality that exists today. And this is just a little graphic chart that kind of sums up those words. And so this is just, imagine the city and some forecast for growth over the next 10 years at some cost of inflation. We can then see like, the orange line there is really just if departments were to divide up and say, what's the core, what's the existing, and that little delta between the top of that bar and that green line around existing community commitments, right, that's our shadow deficit. And then anything above that, right, are these additional pieces. And the conversation that we would like to have with you is really in that space between the current set of, of resources available relative to the additional things that are going to be necessary to sort of meet on those commitments. So then you can arbitrate around, are these really truly our commitments? Are we going to prioritize them? And if so, are we going to try to do that within existing spending? Or are we then trying to think about new revenue tools to deliver those services that the community has desired? Okay, so with that understanding, and something we're going to be engaging with you here in the, in the, in the coming weeks and over the summer, is then to actually build out some scenarios. So once you understand sort of the, the, the delta, what those projects are, we then want to actually create scenarios so we can actually look at the effect on sustainability. So what if we prioritize project A and B and deprioritize project C? Could we continue to do that under existing resources, or will we need new revenue to meet those things?
Councilmember Dahlhoff has another question.
Thank you, Mayor. Number one, I love this. Number two, would council have access when we're doing the budget talks? You know how many times the iterations we go through, well, what about this? What about this? What about this? Would council have access to play around with this?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just to kind of expand on that, if I may. So the process now is to create the model that gives us the ability and the capacity to do this moving forward. So doing this now allows us to prepare for the budgeting process in 2026 that will prepare us for the next biennial budget. That's '27 to '28. And the, the nice thing about this, which Morgan didn't mention, is that this is built on an Excel spreadsheet. So it's not proprietary software. It, it, it doesn't take special knowledge on how to function. It's not an ERP transition process. It's a simple, well, it's a complex set of Excel spreadsheets. And as long as we have someone with intermediate to advanced knowledge on how to work spreadsheets, which we do, we have increased capabilities to really have a solid conversation around the impacts of what if we do this and, and we see it go, you know, the fiscal cliff? How do we avoid the fiscal cliff if we do this? It, it's a tool that allows you to see that instead of just hearing about it from staff.
I love this. And I'm also just thinking with my, my seatmates, when we have our multiple list of what we want, that that's a conversation for us. Well, what if we adjust that? What do we adjust that to meet multiple needs? So, thank you.
And I just might add, for, you know, all the years I was on council and that, you know, I always saw this silos of bienniums, you know, well, we'll look at that next biennium. And then three bienniums go by, and we still haven't addressed it, and now it's gotten more critical. So I was glad that this has been ongoing for this year of like, we have to do something to make this more usable and workable. And so I'm very happy that you'll be doing this for us.
I'm going to roll through this, these next few slides, because I think you guys understand where we're going here, is really to give you the ability to design spending and revenue packages and see the long-term implication of those things going forward. These are just kind of food for thought, right? So one, we could always want to start with a status quo. What if we do nothing? What's our baseline? So that we can understand relative changes to spending or revenue to that position. Because I think as, as you guys all know, you know, local governments are in a difficult position with respect to the property tax and what it really means to for fiscal sustainability. You're always pushing out that cliff a little bit as much as you can by managing your costs and being smart on the revenue side. But then, right, we can then start packaging ideas together around, are there service expansions that we want to tie to revenues, right? That is like a distinct kind of package that we could look at in different iterations, right? And you can discuss the trade-offs around affordability, community expectations, the impact on your long-term financial sustainability. You have a large list of capital projects that you currently are within your CFP. But, you know, as everybody knows, when it comes to capital, there's a lot more needs than there actually are available dollars. And so here we can either prioritize around capital investments, whether we're focusing on sort of key ones, or we're actually thinking about specific funding strategies to execute on some key, on some very sort of important projects. Again, Councilmember Swarlat raised a question around debt, right? Our model allows us to look at the use of, of the city's general obligation debt tools and what it would mean from, in terms of accounting for financing costs, particularly if we're trying to pair that with special like voted levies to kind of pay for things. So we can do those kind of matchup, matchups. We can also stress test things. And so like, I think is very appropriate, given Troy's presentation, right? So what if sales tax is only growing at 2% as opposed to what it's been doing at 2 and 1/2, 3 and 1/2 over the last several years? How much sort of risk does that give us in any of these ideas? And again, we can also test some big ideas, right? Particularly on the cost side, if, if we wanted to say, well, what if we try to actually think about sort of regional collaboration? So obviously, the RFA kind of sits in this kind of idea, but allows us to kind of test these big pieces. So I have some big questions, none of them at which you have to answer today. But if you have preliminary thoughts, it would be great to kind of just surface these things, because I think for us, because I think for us, part of the feedback here is helpful as we sort of design the tool and design the sort of analysis and packaging of these things. But particularly, you know, I always think about is like, have we framed this conversation in a way that is accessible to you and the community? Like, does the three-tiered budget framework make sense? Do you feel like this kind of tool can help you make sort of those budget decisions? To me, I think there, we want to know, are there high priority initiatives, right? Particularly from either existing ones that the city is still continuing to try to execute on, or ones that are on your legislative agenda that we should be paying attention to? Again, are there sort of within that core services or outcomes that you feel like are non-negotiable? So if this is really a question of priorities, you know, anything there? And then there's always a question of trade-offs. We don't have to get into those because we have to know what we're talking about. But to me, I think if there's a desire to make sure we sort of think about revenue tools and different kinds of revenue tools, if you have thoughts and ideas there. So again, these are really kind of more forward-looking questions that we're going to be engaging on going forward. But if you have additional thoughts or feedback for us, we'd gladly take that today as well.
All right. Any questions or comments? Administrator Park.
So I'm really excited for you to see this work. And Troy and I and our directors are really excited to be able to start plugging in some scenarios. It actually is not by mistake that we have been trying to talk as a management team about our types of services that we provide. There are certain things that we are obligated to provide, mandated to provide, and then there are things that people want us to do. And so the strategic planning process, Morgan is going to be helping us out on the 28th. He's going to be attending and listening because the session on June 28th is really intended to take those things that are in the current commitment and enhanced services types of categories and begin to understand from the council what you as a body prioritize among those types of things so that we can take the baseline financial scenarios that they've already, the analysis that they've already done based on the modeling tool and understand what happens if we plug in these different priorities that you give us. So June 28th, you give us some preliminary priorities. We will be coming back to you with Morgan and the scenario building tool throughout the summer. We're not going to ask for any additional Saturdays other than the September one. We'll do this at regular work sessions, regular council meetings, but we want to be able to take that preliminary work that you're going to do about priorities in June and help refine that so that by the time we get to the end of this year, we have a strategic plan and we have a set of work plans that are based off the priorities that you've selected, that you've seen the basic financial impacts of, so that we can then begin to plug those in in more detail in our budgeting process next year.
Any questions? I think this will be a great tool and will really help. And, you know, doing a biennial budget is a huge, huge job and a huge lift. And if you change one thing, when you do it the way we've been doing it historically, it is really, really, really difficult to make all those changes everywhere else. So I think this will be a great tool. Councilmember Jefferson?
Yes, and for transparency too. So, you know, the community can see, you know, how the process is going, something like that. So how did you find Morgan?
I've known Morgan for probably 20 years. He's done a lot of really great work for a lot of communities. They do this kind of work. They do public policy work. He's a planner, so we like him especially. And yes, we're very much looking forward to being able to help us be financially resilient in the future.
I'm just, I'm just hearing all your qualifications on a morning. Do we have a position open for Morgan just to come to the city at Tom Water work? I mean, just think about it, Morgan. Just think about it. Think about it.
It's a day that'll be, that'll sound great.
There's no pressure.
I have a short attention span, so being a consultant is pretty great. I'll just say, we've been sitting in kind of the shadows, doing some work behind the scenes, but we're really looking forward now to kind of be more outward-facing with you all and engaging in these conversations. And I'm literally looking forward to it because I think it's super fun.
Great. Thank you so much. And you will be seeing this topic on more than a few occasions, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, we will move to committee reports. First one is Public Health and Safety, and councilmember Agabi.
Thank you, Mayor. So on June 10th, we had our Public Health and Safety Committee meeting, and we only had one item, and that was police strategic plan and 2024 performance data overview. Although it was one item, it covered almost now and ah, because for the police department, they break down their presentation into operations and administrative, and that covered a whole bunch of grants. So that is what we talked about. I'm done.
All right. Thank you. Next is General Government Committee, councilmember Althouser.
Thanks, Mayor. Sorry I couldn't be there tonight. I wasn't feeling well today. The General Government Committee met on June 11th. We had four items on our agenda. We talked about the 2025 comp plan update. That was specifically about the conservation element this time. And then we went through three ordinances slash agreements. We talked about ADUs for our inner local agreement in terms of working with our other cities so that we have those coordinated plans. And then we also did an ADU service provider agreement. Both of those items were on the consent calendar this evening and were approved. And then we also did an agreement for Thurston County Specialized Recreation, which is an agreement for us to work with the county to provide specialized services for those in our community with developmental disabilities and physical disabilities so they can access recreation services. That was, I believe, approved tonight as well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Public Works Committee, councilmember Swartho.
Thank you, Mayor. We had one of the items on our consent calendar was information that we dealt with on our previous meeting. We will not be meeting this week. It's supposed to be on Juneteenth, and then we're not moving, meeting this week, Public Works. So we will see you again in July.
Great. Thank you. Budget and Finance Committee did meet on June 13th, and we had the presentation, the budget and presentation that was presented here tonight. And we also did the interviews for the Community and Human Services Grants, and that information and those grants will be coming forward to council, I believe, on the next council meeting. So, yeah. All right. So now we will move to Mayor and City Administrator Report, and we will start off with City Administrator Parks.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. So I wanted to start off the good transition from councilmember Agabi's report from the Public Health and Safety Committee. One of the items that was discussed is a new business liaison pilot project that the Detective Division has been working on for the past several months to help improve the relationships between our business community and the Tom Water Police Department. So essentially, what they're doing is they're taking a list of business licenses that are issued in the city, those that are brick and mortar operations, and they send a detective to each location that's new and provide them with contact information for our police officers. They have an informational flyer that they've developed, and they talk to business owners about the different, their premises and things that they might do to help better secure their facilities. And they also make sure that we have updated information for TCOM. To date, we've contacted close to 30 businesses and are striving to reach more each week. We've had great feedback so far, and I want to make sure that we send a special thanks to Lieutenant Jen Cole and Sergeant Chuck Lisca. These two people were instrumental in actually putting together this program, which is a great step forward for our police department and our community. Reporting quickly on our busy weekend, this last weekend for the city of Tom Water, if you were anywhere near Pioneer Park, you understand why the project was added to the six-year tip to create a roundabout at that intersection with Henderson Boulevard. There were 48 teams that played at the third annual rally in the valley volleyball tournament. There were 15 men's teams, 14 women's teams, and 19 co-ed teams. So that was a great turnout. And we have increased the number of teams every years, every year for the last three years, so that's good news. And then as one of the favorite events for people in our community was Dog Days. This was also the third year for that event. 33 participating vendors, 1,000 in attendance, and 80 vaccines were completed by the Deshute Animal Clinic. And then I would like to make you aware of an upcoming new concert, craft concert series that the Parks and Rec Department is putting together. There's going to be four different concerts this year through the summer in the area that is going to be the future amphitheater at the Craft District. We have four events, and the first one is happening on June 26th. I believe that's a Thursday night. And it is a rockin' summer with Nico and the Night Shift, and that's from 6:00 to 7:30 in that area that will be the amphitheater. Lastly, June 20th is the last day to participate in our community engagement survey, so please continue to spread the word, and we hope to get more additional feedback from our community. That's it.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And for my report, I attended the Thurston County Chamber meeting on June 11th, and that one was the graduation of Leadership Thurston County candidates. And we have three who graduated. So we had James Osberg from our fire department, Kelly Adams, who is our Assistant City Administrator, and Alyssa Joneswood. And they all graduated from Leadership Thurston County, and that is, I think, an amazing program that, you know, and what, and I'm sorry if I'm putting James on the spot here, but he says, it gets us out of our silos and really understand the broad scope of our community, because sometimes we only get involved in what we're dealing with specifically, either through our career or hobbies or through other things. But Leadership Thurston County really gives you a broad scope of what goes on in the, in the whole county. And then I will be attending the AWC conference in Kennewick next week. So we have Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Kennewick, then our retreat on Saturday. I know, it's going to be a painful week. And then on not only that, I serve on three committees, and one of our committees at the, at the, at the, at the conference starts at 6:30 a.m. And whoever thought that was a good idea? See, this is what happens when you raise your hand on a whole bunch of committees. So, so it'll be very enjoyable that going there, but it's not a relaxing trip for a week. So with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to council reports. And councilmember Kathy, do you want to start?
I can do that. Be brief. I had two meetings since last we met. One was the Solid Waste Advisory Council. I'm talking about some of the things going on in the summer, about recycling and where folks are going to, you know, outside things to also show up and have booths and talk about it. And they were very positive about people's response to, to the recycling. I know that sounds old, but it's always new, always people wanting to talk about it or what new things have been added or taken away. So we've had a real emphasis on, on the recycling. The other committee was the, let's see, which one was it? It was ORCA, the Olympic Region Clean Air Council. And most of what we talked about, which was interesting, is this month of June has been a clean air month. And that sounds redundant since we're the Clean Air Authority, but it has to do with how we handle as our communities for smoke for, you know, from fires, forest fires and so forth, and the damage that causes to people because of the air and, and things that we can do when the air is bad, and emphasizing who needs to do that the most. So anyway, we had a long discussion about that. And take a deep breath now, because the air is good. So that's my report.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Althouser.
Thanks, Mayor. My committees have not met since the last council meeting, so I have no meetings, no report. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Agabi.
Thank you, Mayor. So I do have quite a few issues. So on June 9th, I attended a JSCOM meeting, and part of our discussion was about shelter statistic and then volunteer program update at the facility. And then we talked about low-cost spray and neutral, and then we voted on a budget amendment. So now back to the volunteer program update. So the statistic that we were given, that we looked at, shows that the center has a lot of volunteer, they were putting in a lot of hours. So if that were to continue, that means that they will have to either hire staff at .5 or .1 so that they can relieve our shelter statistics, so they can relieve shelter staff who had to jump in to help in. So that's one. And then the low, the low-cost spray and neutral, according to data that we were giving, it appears that we don't have enough of a low-cost spray and neutral program in Washington, more so on the western side of Washington, and more so in Thurston County. So we were told that Thurston County residents have to travel to Tacoma, which is newest, and there's Nohomish County to go do low-cost spray and neutral, because we don't necessarily have one here that they can access. So that appears to be a problem that we will have to keep an eye on. So on June 11th, and here, and now here's the controversy part, on June 11th, actually on June 10th, my calendar prompted me saying that I have a meeting to attend. So I click on it, and that took me to TRPC. So narrowly, I wouldn't attend a TRPC meeting, but because my calendar prompted me, it was early in the morning, I'm in my confused state, I went to TRPC. And councilmember Swarla was also attending that meeting because she's our representative. So at that meeting, the discussion focused on the regional transportation plan, RT. So now, back to my June 11 transportation board meeting. So the same folks that came to the June 10th meeting that presented during the, during the RT, presented, gave a presentation to a public hearing. And then when it comes to our discussion around the regional transportation plan, we took that discussion further. From my recollection, to well understand what was going on, is that the Lock Cabin Road, which is somewhere here in Thurston County under Olympia jurisdiction, the TRPC had at one point, don't know when, maybe last year, said that they would like for that road, that extension to not go forward. So now, because this is a regional plan in council and not just the city of Olympia jurisdiction only, so that involves Tom Water, Lacey, and Olympia, and probably South County. So now, did our, our chairman and the writer had to stop us from taking a vote on recommending that this Lock Cabin Road be taken out? At least that was my understanding of what was going on. But so anyhow, in that discussion, we were told by Mayor and the writer that since we're a regional body, that it behopes us all to go to our various city council to ask them what they would like to do, instead of us individually imposing upon the council what we would like to do based upon our personal preferences. As many of you may have noticed, you may have gotten emails from various individuals asking the from various individuals asking the council to please support the removal of that log cabin road. So I met with the mayor on Sunday, and I kind of brought this up in a semi-unofficial way. So officially, Mayor, my ask now is, since we've gotten all those emails from those citizens wanting us to do something, what can the city of Tomwater do at this point in time with this particular issue?
Are you asking a question, Councilmember Agabi?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, that's on TRPC. That's not in our jurisdiction.
So now, all this email that we have gotten, how do we respond to them? At least show them that we did, at least acknowledge that, okay, we got your email, and this is where the issue is.
I, hold on, Councilmember, or City Minister has answered.
So staff, some of the staff is on the council distribution list, and so we have seen those. I actually responded to one that I saw on Monday and just acknowledged that, that they had provided the information, clarified that they were likely needing to speak to either Olympia or Lacey. And in this case, it actually was the City of Olympia project. And that, when the person responded back to me, she indicated, she thanked me, but then talked about TRPC and RTP. So I honestly didn't know what the issue was when the first email came through. I have not had a chance to respond to the others, but we will develop basically a standardized response and indicate that, you know, it is a project in the City of Olympia. We do have represented elected officials that sit on the TRPC and RTP, the, our, the Transportation Policy Board, and that the comments really are more specifically directed to either RTP, TRPC, or the Thurston County Regional Planning Council or the Transportation Policy Board most appropriately. So that, we'll develop that standardized response and begin to do that with those, with those people.
Okay, so now, so if that road were to not go forward, that road in question, according to TPP staff in their presentation, here in Tomwater, we will be massively impacted by traffic, because you will have traffic going from Toward Boulevard onto Henderson and onto Yem Highway going to Lacey. And then you also have traffic going on Capitol Highway, Capitol Boulevard, and then going to that Olympia to go to Lacey. So currently, at this point in time, if you, so you talked about the, about the proposed or future runabout by Pioneer Park. So Pioneer Park is off Henderson Boulevard. So now, if according to TPP staff, we would have traffic, at least, don't know whether light or heavy, but some traffic that would be added onto Toward Boulevard, going to Henderson into Yem Highway, that is something that will affect us here. So beside being an Olympia issue, it is a Tomwater issue also.
So Councilmember Swarthout actually emailed Brandon Hicks this afternoon and asked this very question, and he responded. So I'm happy to forward that to you. I apologize, I don't remember exactly what that email said, but I will forward that to you, Councilmember Agabi, so you can see his basically technical, professional response to that very question.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mayor. So that's my report. Sorry, I had to, I had to go a runabout way.
Councilmembers Dahlhoff had a question.
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, that is a bigger discussion, though, right? When we're in our jurisdiction, and we're in a meeting, you get two other jurisdictions, and it's getting a little messy. And then it comes to Tomwater, right? And then the mayor appoints one of us to go and represent Tomwater, right? So I appreciate this conversation of coming back, right? But how do we have that moving forward when it's getting messy, and then Tomwater's in the middle? Like naturally, I would defer to the jurisdiction whose recommendation is to remove it, right? That's my natural preference. But also, there is an impact. So what do we do moving forward? Not just with Councilmember Agabi's example, but if this happens in our other committees?
I think, I believe Karen knows the specific answer to this. I'll take a stab at it. There is a section in your council rules that addresses the roles of you as representatives of the City of Tomwater to those regional boards. For the typical routine, easy decisions, they're yours to make. If there is a question that needs to come back to the full council, then it is, it is important for you to be able to communicate that at the regional board. And I would recommend that you, I don't know if this part's in the council rules, but I would recommend that you bring it back to staff so that we can begin to support you and get it actually into the council agenda process so that we can have the conversation at a council meeting so that a decision or a conversation or direction can be given from this Tomwater council to the person that's representing you on those regional boards.
Thank you, thank you, Lisa. So this, I'm sorry, I just need to add a little bit, put more meat into what this question is. So at TPP, we had to table this discussion because of the way it evolved. So on July 9, I believe, I don't know if it's going to come back up, but it's going to come back pretty quick. And July 9 is our next meeting, so I don't know what we need to do with that.
We can work on getting some, some information and, and from the, from what we're hearing from the public, so. Great, all right. So Councilmember Swarthout, do you want to start off since, since this topic already came up? And, and you can go ahead and do your report.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So it was fun finding Peter, or Councilmember Agabi, on the meeting with me on TRPC. He was very engaged and asked really great questions. So I did appreciate his participation. We had an agenda-setting meeting today to discuss the TRPC meeting for July. And so we'll, we will be addressing this whole, the action that we took. There's information that may have been, that was missing that they need to provide to us as far as, and it's the TRPC staff that want to provide us with the information about the effects of taking that road out and then the impact that will have on the whole regional transportation plan. And so we'll be getting more information about that at our July meeting. So, but it is very complicated, and it will be the TRPC, the Thurston Regional Planning Council, that will be making that final vote. So just to let you know as far as that, for it all. And I have been, and then also too, I just wanted to say that typically on meetings, like when I do the climate meeting, and then also with TRPC, that I, staff has always made themselves available so I can be briefed and then ask any questions ahead of time and, and get an idea of what position that Tomwater will be taking. Because some of these things, you know, we're not, we don't do this in our daily lives. So we do really depend on staff to help advise us on, on the direction that we need to take. So I want to do a shout out to the staff for that, for providing that. So, and this is one, I got in touch with Brandon, so, yeah. So it's, it's an interesting topic, and it has a real effect, the, the whole regional transportation plan for Thurston County. So, so that'll be coming up. And that was our meeting that we had on, in the last, on June 6, that we had, took a long time on that particular topic. So, and the other meetings that I had, I got to meet our urban forester. His name was Brian. I don't remember his last name, I'm sorry to say. But it was really awesome. He's been out counting trees and the different kinds of, like, the mountain ash and different trees, he's been out. He's amazing. And I just want to commend, when we hire new people, that you brought these amazing people in, and the work that they're doing, it's very exciting to be part of that and see the, the fruits of our labor, the hiring of staff. And then the only other thing I want to do is when you're walking out tonight, please look at the landscaping outside. It is extraordinary. And I don't, again, I'm so bad with names. I talk to the gentleman all the time, because he's just extraordinary with the way his, the plan that he has out there for the planting and the beds and everything. And so just, I'm a gardener, and I just love it. So anyway, just wanted to shout out to our staff. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Thurston County 911 Communications met. We talked about the radio system. I think some of you have been around. We switched from the analog radios to the digital radios. We've had them long enough that they're doing upgrades now. So some of you might find that interesting. I did. The Thurston County Opia Abatement Council met and went over getting access to Choi for funding accounts and some delays, not on us. But also, we provided insight of the type of projects we would like to fund and an overlap with partnership with tribes, because they're also receiving funds. So what could that look like? And Lisa and I serve on that council, so more to come. Jason and I attended, today's only Tuesday, yesterday. The community, no, that was different. Rachel Grant had a town hall, went to that, Community Learning Collaborative. That was super informative of all the overlaps of our community. So more to come with that. Thurston County Opia Response Task Force Prevention. There's going to be some social media campaigns on billboards and radio, on TV, on preventing substance use and overdose. So look for that. Any insight would be appreciative. Also with lock boxes and how to store your medicine safely. Lot also met, doing some policy updates, so I will not share that to bore you. Also, when the mayor was at the Dog Days, I was opening the Olympic Air Show, which was super cool. It was super cool, and the mayor can't be everywhere all at once. Yesterday, Jason and I attended the Thurston Forward Summit. We had one in 2025, so more to come with that, which is super exciting. And I appreciate Jason attending those meetings. And what I dig is that the mayor's open to looking at, what does it look like for Tomwater to support? Could that be monetary, staff hours? So kudos to the mayor for looking at what that could look like moving forward. And next week, also the Association of Washington Cities Conference. And then, so if the mayor and I are cranky on Saturday, you know why. And that's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Jefferson.
Yes, on 12th of June, Tomwater Hopes Coalition met. And Tomwater Hopes, EST 113, and the Washington State Department of Health are bringing a, an awareness class to the community. The class is called Drug Availability Via Social Media. What Families Should Know and Do. Kids these days, and young adults these days, are obtaining drugs and substances on TikTok using symbols and some things that parents and guardians don't even know about. So this impactful training will help educators, parents, and guardians uncover how social media platforms are increasingly being used to promote and distribute dangerous substances to youth. Through real-life experiences and visual case studies, participants will leave with practical tools to prevent and respond to this growing threat. The date is the 25th of June from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. and the 26th of June from 12:00 to 1:00 p.m. So I've sent this flyer to our communications manager, our police and fire department, to help us to distribute it widely. That will be appreciated, because we definitely need to get this information out there. It might save a life. Our community surveys should be available mid-July, Tomwater Hopes. We're still waiting on minimum collection numbers, and we're going to offer it via paper, online. And we are looking at events to distribute the surveys, back-to-school events, et cetera. So more to follow on that. Olympia and Beyond, our Visitors Convention Bureau, we met today in Tomwater. And on the 8th of July, we're going, going to welcome the new CEO. The gentleman's name is Michael Day. He's excited, ready to get to work, enthusiastic. And he's from Edmonds, Washington. So he's looking forward to moving down here, living in our community and working with us. So we're going to have our Board of Directors meeting from 3:30 to 4:30 on the 8th, and it's going to be a community meeting greet for Mr. Day from 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. at Anthony's. So not Anthony's Hard Fire, Anthony's by the farmer's market. We also had a long discussion about communications from Olympia and Beyond, because it, it seems like their partners, our city leaders and, and managers and mayors, they're just not understanding what is going on. What are they doing for us for that, for the money? So the point being, I made a recommendations to get more FaceTime. Get out of the office, come and brief the electeds, come brief those mayors, come to our work sessions. We need to know what you are doing and where you are going. They just came up with, you know, a comprehensive plan, long range. So that's going to be something that the new CEO has to, has to, to, to figure out, right? And we also talked about our group. We do have some conflict, you know, with the county, with the different cities. We talked about the naming of it, Olympia and Beyond. Why, why isn't it Tomwater and Beyond? Why isn't it Lacey and Beyond? So we need to work together as a group, because this is about teamwork. This is about Thurston County Visitors Convention Bureau. So that was a good, good discussion we had. So Mayor, they do know that they need some work to do as far as communication, communicating what they're doing these days. That's my report.
Great, thank you. Yes, we did have a meeting. So Councilmember Von Haltz.
Thank you, Mayor. Attended Public Health and Safety, Inner City Transit. I will attend another Inner City Transit meeting tomorrow. We get to check out the new maintenance facility and have a little field trip, so I'm excited about that. I attended LEED yesterday, and that's our law enforcement assisted diversion group. And unfortunately, the budget cuts are hitting HCA Navigators Program and LEED. LEED Thurston County will continue at their current level throughout the year. And then, and then we'll see, right? But they're working really hard, they're making, they're making headway, they're getting a lot of new referrals, and they're really excited, because Tomwater, the chief stepped out. Tomwater got kudos, because we are more involved than we've been in a very long time. Deputy Chief Keelis has been to all the meetings recently and helping make connections within Tomwater so we can help our community members who are just as involved maybe see a way other than jail or prosecution. So that was great. On Saturday, Councilmember Dahlhoff and I got to attend a community event at Western Plaza. They were celebrating Governor Ferguson signing House Bill 1217, which caps tenant rent, but specifically mobile home rent at 5%. And so it was really nice to talk to, I don't know, there's about 50 people there. And the 50, 50 community members, they know how to grill a hot dog perfectly, I will just say. And just something to keep in mind, these are senior individuals on a fixed income. So capping it at 5% is amazing compared to the $100 raises that they've seen under rent since a corporation took over their mobile home park. But still, if you think of 5% every year, that's a lot. And so more to come from the small but mighty neighborhood community. It was, it was great. And then I wanted to talk about our three staff members who graduated from Leadership Thurston County, because I am a 2024 grad, Councilmember Dahlhoff, 2016. If anyone else graduated, I didn't know, so I'm sorry. But James, Alyssa, and Kelly, they dedicated themselves for the past 10 months, one Thursday a month. And they got to learn a lot about Thurston County and expand on their leadership skills. And I'm just really excited for all the connections to really come together for all of you. And I'm really, it was, I was there as a grad, but I was like, yay, Tomwater! And so grateful, Mayor, that you let our staff attend. There's a cost involved, but I think that the benefits, the return on investment, is huge. And so I have goodies for you, I have cards for each of you and goodies. I already had to fight off my daughter and Councilmember Swarthout for these chocolates. So if you don't give us to James and Alyssa, I'll never say anything. But I just really wanted to, like, this is important to Thurston County. And so kudos, and, and thank you to the city for making this happen. And that is my report.
Great, thank you. And, and the thing about the manufactured home parks, that was one of the things, being on the legislative committee and really pushing that for on their, being on their ledge, because it affects a lot of small communities. And manufactured home parks is one of those affordable housing things. So I was excited when, you know, pushing that, because when I first started mentioning this, Because when I first started mentioning this early on last year with our, determining what our ledge agenda was going to be, I, it went way better and went further than I had anticipated. So I thought there was going to be way more pushback on that one. So I'm very happy that that one went through, so.
Yeah, so are they.
So, so we'll still work on it though. All right, if there's nothing else, we are adjourned for the evening. Thank you, everyone.